Three weeks ago, she had a truck with four wheels went down the side with the sanders, with the baddies.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of August 20th, 2019. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have one, two, looks like we have a quorum this evening. I'll have a roll call of members present. Michael Croto, Chair.
Kimberly Queen, and Vice Chair.
Tony Turecki, Clerk.
Josh Schmidt, Member.
Kevin Lynch, Selectman.
First off, is public input on non-agenda items, any input on items that are not on the agenda for this evening? Does anyone have anything in the, for the public? Okay, hearing none. I will start off with the first order of business this evening is the application by Continental Paving Incorporated at Tax Map 22 Lot 8, 517 to 519 Charles Bancroft Highway to subdivide one lot into two. Is the applicant present? And if so, please introduce yourselves to the board and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question, we also have the case behind it. It is a site plan subsequent to the subdivision, and I didn't know if you wanted to read that in the record. I could present both, or we could do them individually, whatever your choices.
Well, I thought, and it's the board's in agreement this evening, what we would do is kind of do it in two parts, if we can. We'll do the subdivision piece first.
Okay.
And only the subdivision, and then, once we get that squared away, then we'll go into the site plan review portion, and we can, you know, review that as a separate.
Fantastic.
If that works for everybody.
So, my job here tonight is obviously to present the facts of the application and then answer any questions you might have. Let me get everybody located first. The subject site is at 517 and 519 Charles Bancroft Highway. We're in the northwest part of Litchfield, and it's a somewhat uniquely shaped 11.7 acre property that is currently in both a northern commercial and northern commercial slash industrial service zoning district. And Continental Paving purchased this property probably three years ago. The property is abutted by Continental Paving to the east, several commercial lots to the south, Charles Bancroft Highway to the west and to the north. Just New England Power owns a piece of property there. The property currently contains two structures on it. In the north end of the structure is a single-family residential home. Continental, Rick Charbonneau, who's with me tonight, is currently evaluating kind of the condition of the house to kind of figure out exactly what they want to do with it. The other building on the site is a 3,600, almost a 3,700 square foot equipment repair facility. That facility has been in business at this location for over 40 years, but most recently, as I said, in the last three years Continental Paving purchased the site. Some unique features about the property, I think, is really Leech Brook. Leech Brook is a perennial stream, and it's associated wetlands running in kind of a westerly direction. It really bisects the property here. Okay. Topography of the remaining site is really fairly flat. The test pits were done on the site, sandy soils that we would expect in this part of Litchfield. As I mentioned, there are some associated wetlands along Limit Brook, and we've represented the buffers for, I'm sorry, Leech Brook for the site. Both buildings are currently, Mr. Chairman, serviced by Town Water and municipal septic systems. So with regard to the subdivision, what is being proposed is relatively simple, straightforward, one lot into two subdivision. We're seeking to establish a lot line really down the center of Leech Brook. That will create Lot 8-1, approximately 2.4 acres in size, and it will create new Lot 8-2, approximately 9.3 acres in size. Our application does not contain any waiver requests. The plan conforms to your regulations. We did not receive any comments from NRPC or from Lou Karen on that particular application. So, that kind of concludes the subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Certainly. Before I get into any questions, I just want to make sure, first of all, that we look at acceptance of the application. That is basically a paper exercise. We want to make sure we have all documents that were needed, that all abutters have been notified, and that all fees have been paid to the, to the town by the applicant. I did receive an email from Joan today stating that all the abutters had been notified and that all fees have been paid. Jay, in terms of completeness of this application, would you concur that this application is complete as far as the subdivision goes?
Yes.
Okay. Just a question, is there going to be any regional impact to this project at all? Anything would affect it? No? Okay. With that said, that, you know, obviously Jay says that it's been completed, we have all the documents, we have the abutters notified, we have all fees paid. At this time, I would ask the board, unless the board asks questions, to entertain a motion to accept the application as presented.
Make a motion to accept the application as presented?
Okay. A motion has been made to accept this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do I have discussion? All right. All those in favor of signifying by saying aye and raise your hands, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion carries 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 0, 0. Okay. So, the application has been accepted as to its, as to the documents presented by yourself and as to fees paid and an abut is notified. Now, what I will probably do is, I know you had just presented, I kind of did it in reverse order this evening, I'm sorry. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? I know he just presented what he's going to be doing in terms of the lot, in terms of the subdivision.
I have none.
You have none. Okay. All right. Let's see. Just bear with me here one second.
May I have something restated? What, you said Luke Karen didn't have any problem with this? Oh, you haven't heard back?
We did not, we received comments on the site plan. We did not receive any comments on the subdivision.
There was no associated engineering with this.
That's what I thought I heard, I should make sure.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there is a New Hampshire DES state subdivision approval associated with the subdivision of the property, and we've obtained, we've obtained that permit.
Okay.
Yep.
Came in just the other day.
Has the fire department been notified? Has there been any discussion with them at all about emergency access and as to the subdivided lot or?
Right on the street.
Yeah.
You can drive up to it. What's happening?
But I was just curious if there was any written documentation or anything, apparently. The land itself, can you describe what the, what kind of topography or what it looks like?
You know, this stretch of Charles Bancroft Highway, I'm sure many board members are familiar, driving by, the site is fairly flat. You can see the house is quite close. The house was built, Rick, guess, over 100 years old?
Eighteen seventy-nine.
Eighteen seventy-nine. They liked to tuck them up close to the road back then, and so the house is fairly close to the road. This building, I'm going to guess, was built sometime in the 70s, set back from the road. This is all fairly flat land. You'll hear as part of the site plan for the building, some of the improvements we're proposing to make, but it, Mr. Chairman, it is, topography is fairly flat. This is a nicely wooded area, so there's good separation between these two buildings, and this becomes a little bit more open in terms of tree cover. Yep.
It looks like in a regular shape. Or is it my, is it?
Yeah, it's, you know, Continental owns this parcel here. Here's New England Power. It's just how the property was formed, you know, and so we thought best in order to create the subdivision, just using the brook as the common property line made some sense. And both lots do comply with your subdivision standards.
I'm sorry.
Is that on it?
No, we bought that property from Craig.
Okay. And you don't have, I mean, is it, is it, do you have to do like a lot line adjustment
So it used to be different than what it's shown right now, but we subdivided that.
or anything like that, or are you pretty much?
Sir, it's one lot right now.
I was trying to go back 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago.
Yeah.
With two buildings, we're creating this interior lot right here to make it two lots.
Okay.
We subdivided and blocked that lane of the power lines from it.
Yeah.
So that's where the adjustment?
That's the request before you.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you don't know, both sides of the power line, that got incorporated into
Okay. All right. Okay.
the, into existing facility.
So, I mean, we have the application for the subdivision. Okay.
That's why it's shaped like that.
I was just curious. Actually, before I even do that, I'm actually going to open, I'm going to tip, because we're I was looking at it, and I was looking at the thing, and I was like...
But that's, that line, the power lines come right through here.
going to do this in two parts. I'm going to, right now, I'm going to open this up to public comment, this part of the Mm-hmm.
So it does look a little bit different.
portion of the, only as to the subdivision. Yeah.
That's because it's a power line right here.
Is there any members of the public here who wish to have any questions or concerns about I see.
So when we, this property originally was something like this, and then back over
as to the subdivision only?
this way, and I bought that many years ago.
Not the site plan. Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to come back to the board. Does the board have any further questions for the applicant? for Tax Map 22 Lot 8, 517 to 519 Charles Bancroft Highway to divide, sorry, to subdivide one lot into two.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have discussion? All right.
It really isn't. It's a simple lot, one lot subdivision. I read the plan, it confirms, sir, and NRPC has done an excellent job in that.
Mm-hmm.
So we're in compliance with all.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hands, aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion carries 5, 0, 0. Okay. So that takes care of the subdivision piece. Now we're going to move on to part two, which is an application by Continental Paving at Tax Map 22 Lot 8, 517 Charles Bancroft Highway, site plan for proposed parking and associated site improvements. Basically, if you want to introduce yourself again, and then, you don't have to if you don't want to.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I'm at, I'm at, I'm at your pleasure. If you'd like to talk about application acceptance first, we can do that.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to do before I even jumped into that.
I'd like to hear, I'm happy to do it anyway.
Okay. So why, why don't we do this? Why don't we do the, the acceptance of the application first? Again, I received an email from Joan. She said all the abutters have been notified, and all fees have been paid by the applicant. Is there going to be any regional impact to the project that you know of?
None, nothing to pick out of this one.
Okay. Jay, have we received all the necessary documents for this site plan in terms of completeness or completeness purposes?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the application is complete. We do know that there are three waivers that are requested.
Okay. All right. All right. If the, if the application is complete, we have the abutters notified, we have the fees paid, I would entertain a motion to accept the application at this time.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, our application.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a second. Do we have discussion? All those signify by saying aye. Raise your hand, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, abstained, motion carries 5, 0, 0, and the application has been accepted by the board. So, now, what I will do is, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and he can do your presentation as to the site plan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Jim Petropolis, civil engineer, Hayner Swanson, Nashua, New Hampshire, tonight representing Continental Paving, and Rick Charbonneau, President of Continental Paving, is here with me as well. As you just read into the record, upon this newly created Lot 8-2, which was the southerly of the two lots, the larger of the two lots, we are seeking a site plan. Mr. Chairman, there's a few more interesting elements to this particular project than the straightforward subdivision, so I'm going to take my time and just walk through a couple items of interest. As I mentioned in the original, in the subdivision presentation, upon this building sits a 3,600, I think about a 3,700 square foot building, and as I mentioned, this building has been used for many years for the repair of construction-related equipment. Examples could be bulldozers, it could be excavators, it could be a generator, it could be a sifting loam apparatus. Any number of construction-related equipment could be repaired at this facility, and that's how it's been used for many years. Continental, again, bought this building a number of years ago and has used the building in that manner for the last three years or so. The plan before you tonight proposes to make site improvements by constructing a new paved driveway. We're going to relocate the driveway, I'll talk about that in a minute, and then to pave the area around the building. Simply stated, Mr. Chairman, the reason for these improvements is really to improve the look of the site. If you were to go out there today, you would see a gravelled driveway, you would see gravelled areas in and around the building. Continental, over the past three years, has been trying their best to clean up the site with some selective tree clearing, with removal of some equipment, but there's still a little bit of work left to go. And it's our opinion, Mr. Chairman, that the proposed improvements tonight that I'm going to tell you about will drastically improve the aesthetics. Currently, the driveway, as I mentioned, located here, will be shifted several hundred feet to the south, 24-foot entrance. And then into the site, we will have parking for employees and vehicle parking. You'll notice larger paved areas, again, a lot of this equipment comes in on a low boy or a flatbed, and we need some turning radiuses for their equipment. There is some outdoor storage back and behind the building. In the building itself, we'll have an overhead door to enter into the building and then exit out of the building. So it's a fairly simple layout for paving, for parking, for outdoor storage. Those disturbed areas in and around the building will be loaned and ceded. Landscaping will be added in the form of select trees throughout the site. And those trees along Leech Brook will remain, as well as some trees along the front. So, the combination of the existing trees and the proposed trees, we think should, should make the site look, look much better. With regard to stormwater from the newly paved areas, we're proposing a surface-type recharge basin located here behind this grove of trees, hopefully to hide it from the Charles Bancroft Highway. The basin will promote recharge. We have wonderful sands out there, so that paved area will drain into, and the driveway will drain into the stormwater area, provide qualitative and quantitative treatment of the stormwater runoff. We are proposing an outlet to get it to the brook. We like outlets. We don't like big surging storms to topple over basins and cause some erosion. We like controlling that outlet, so we're proposing a piped outlet with riprap apron right to the brook here. And that work, Mr. Chairman, was within the 50-foot regulated buffer. We have received both the Conservation Commission approval, and we've also received a special exception, most recently from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, to impact 1,375 square feet of wetland buffer. No exterior site lighting, no new signage, just a pretty simple, straightforward site plan. As Jay mentioned, we have requested three waivers. I may quickly go through those, Mr. Chairman. Section Site Plan Regulation 120.1 Traffic Impact Study. There really is no additional traffic by the mere paving of the lot. Continental has operated the facility for the past three years. This facility has been in business for over 40 years. Rick, number of employees in the building?
Three or four.
Three or four employees, so it's a fairly light user. So we've asked for a waiver of formal traffic study for that. The second waiver we've asked for is the building design review. As there are no changes or additions proposed as part of this project, you'll notice the site plan does not propose any building additions or any add-ons to the building. The building is as is. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, we've asked for a relief in the form of a waiver from the site-specific soils. You know, it's just, we don't have New Hampshire DES state permitting, which, which requires site-specific soils. We already have a septic system that's in use, and so it didn't seem to make sense that we would need them. Again, my testimony here tonight is the sandy soils throughout the, throughout the site. We did do test pits for the stormwater areas, and just like we thought, it's wonderful sand. If I may, Mr. Chairman, before I complete my presentation, what I'd like to do is just show you one other thing. How does, what we're doing, talking about tonight kind of fit in with, with things in the, in the neighborhood? Rick asked me to take a few minutes and just show you this, and I know Jay hasn't even seen this yet, but it's something I sent to the, to Joan, and we talked to Joan about this, but Rick's vision of kind of this area, and I'd like to just take a minute and walk through this. The property that we're talking about is this piece right here, and in particular, here's this 3,700 square foot building, and you can see we're proposing some, some pavement here. But Rick, again, owns the balance of those nine acres, and he has purchased or optioned to purchase all of this land. So he will own everything along the Charles to Albuquerque, with the exception of the small, I think it's a dumpster holding business that's located right there. Why is, why are we presenting this? Well, we wanted to show you Rick's thoughts that, you noticed our driveway located here, the vision would be to extend that back to Albuquerque and thereby creating a commercial subdivision that could include our lot here, which would be future subdivision, and this is all subject to future planning board approval. We're not seeking any approvals tonight, but I wanted to give you a sense of where we're headed, because we hope to be back someday with both subdivision and site plans of this area. I think the, so, you know, again, Rick has this piece, the three houses at the corner of Charles Bancroft and Albuquerque he currently owns, but I think the big news here is the junkyard is, he's optioned or purchased it, and that will go away. And so, we are excited about this. We think the, the road servicing what could be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots in the future, they range in size from 2 and 1/2 to 5 acres. We don't know, sitting here tonight, what would be in there for uses. It's going to be developed based on market conditions. But I think Rick's now put himself in a position where if somebody knocked on their door and said, hey, I've, I need 2 acres and I'd like to do this, he now has the opportunity to fit them into this commercial subdivision. And so we wanted to present that. Again, step one, kind of subdividing off the house. Step two, let's clean up what's happening here, get the new driveway aligned properly. The stormwater area does, is sized for, there'll be a high point in the road here, it is sized for this road, okay, so that the road is, will have drainage to it. And we just thought of, we just thought that it would be, it would be nice to represent that plan to you guys tonight, being the planning board. So, I want to summarize, Mr. Chairman, by saying that, you know, we think the site plan, again, the purpose is to really clean up that site. We think we're achieving that. We have received comments from both Lou Karen and NRPC. In my opinion, the comments are minor and easily addressed. I'm sure Jay will be speaking tonight, which is, which is fine. And again, hopefully this is the first step in the creation of a, of a nice future commercial subdivision. So, we seek your approval, and both Rick or I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll leave that up there. Site plan here, okay, sir, maybe I'll do the vice first.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have no questions. I went over the site plan this week, I was here about last week. I got to give the engineers credit, okay? And very little in the NRPC factor here. And what we're doing now, the future, if the subdivision goes through, that's another whole ball of wax, but in the meantime, compared to what was there before and what is there now?
Rick, you don't grow pine trees.
I'm going to grow. Rick has a thing about get pine trees, I know that.
Well, that's all the other.
But all in all, I see nothing out of faith, because I've been through a lot of this stuff all the years, and this is basic.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, it's better that the driveway is moved up to get it off the curb right now.
It actually is dangerous on that curb the way it is right now. It's kind of a, kind of a little blind spot right there.
In terms of the paving, you're going to use...
It's kind of a, kind of a little bottom spot right there.
In terms of the paving, you're going to use, I don't know.
Asphalt.
Asphalt, well, yeah, of course. Is there any particular kind of asphalt? I'm not an expert, obviously, but, I mean, is it something that's?
Same stuff that go on the highway.
Okay.
I will say this, Mr. Chairman, that this driveway, as you see on the concept plan, will, may, may become a future public road, so the design of this 200-feet of driveway is in accordance with your town of which were road standards.
Okay. And so, did we get comments from Lou Karen?
I didn't receive them, so I was going to suggest that that could be a condition.
Yeah.
Satisfactory review.
Right.
Consulting engineer.
Okay. But you, you received some from them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
There were six comments that we have responded to, back to Lou, with copies to Joan. I'd be happy to talk about them tonight.
Yeah, if you could let us know what Lou recommended or asked about, that might be helpful.
I'm proud to say there's only seven comments. I'll quickly go through these, and then I'll let you know, Mr. Chairman, how we responded. Lou's asking on the existing conditions plan if we would show the test pit, not only locations, but the test pit logs and the plan set. So certainly happy to do that. He had also asked on the site plan view to add some of the drainage information on the plan view. We like to profile all our drain pipes, and all that information is there. Lou also likes it on the plan view. No problem, we've already added it. Lou on sheet five says we needed to correct an elevation of one of the centerline points. That's been done. His next comment, we specified a four-foot inside diameter leaching structure, but our computation saw the six-foot. It will be a six-foot, and so we've made that correction. He had a quick technical drainage question about the, the condition of the soil. Right now, it's in poor, when we're done, it's going to be good, and so the values that we assign for stormwater, we just had a little back and forth with, and that's been remedied. We added a note about getting some field testing done in that stormwater area when they're building it, and that's done. And then he asked for a silt layer to be put down just on the bottom of that basin. When I say silt layer, a slower draining soil, there's such rapid sands that as water goes in, it's immediately going down. And so much of stormwater is residence time and getting stormwater kind of settle and let its particulate filter out. And so as we build this basin, Mr. Chairman, Rick has at his disposal some low permeability material, who'll come in and blanket that on the bottom and cover it with loam, so it just slows it down moving vertically through the soil. And those were his comments, and I'd be happy to submit this letter if you would like it.
Yeah, I think that's a copy of you. I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I have.
If you have a copy, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
No, I know where the machine is.
Well, that's.
And Joan has my responses in a letter.
Okay.
Back to Lou. Anything that goes to N R P C, it goes back to you.
Has the fire department, I may have asked this before, but we were just talking about the subdivision, but has the fire department been notified, and have they suggested any comments in terms of access from the site?
So they're part of the application process we're required to file to them, which we did. I've not heard any response back, and generally, if there is an issue, Joan becomes aware of it, and she passes it forward, so.
Okay.
Good vantage is sprinkles it. Bad word. There's hydrants out there, so they're pretty well set.
The other thing to keep in mind is this building's been there for 40 years. What we're really only here for is to pave the parking lot. Bottom line, that's really the point, pave the parking lot. Our building, whether you approve it or don't approve it, the building can still operate, it can still go into work because it's been there for so long. So we're just here, not changing the outside of the building, not doing anything like that.
Or the use.
Receiving the parking lot, and that's really what we're doing, is to pave the parking lot.
I'm not here to vouch for Rick or anything, but the building's still the same. All we've done was clear the trees and make a better parking area. You saw the aerial view, you see how the parking was in there before, there was many companies back there, and they're all fitting in between the pine trees, okay? Now it's one company cleared, it's much better.
I, I, it was probably, probably three, four years ago, and it's taken until this time last year to clean it up. So that's a much gentler out there.
That was a fine collectibles.
Yeah, fine collectibles. So there was a lot of stuff out there in the trees and trucks and trailers and all kinds of stuff. There was a lot, a lot of stuff in there. And the building had a lot of stuff in it. So that all got cleaned out in about this time last year, and then we started using it ourselves last winter.
So all the improvements with stormwater management and drainage are to accommodate the paving?
Right.
Okay.
It was dirt and gravel and stuff like that, you already get your stormwater management place, and the percolation rate is horrendous out there. Ground doesn't freeze, and there's no water in it.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that that, that was prior to 79, I believe. I was a project in 79, my garage was there then.
Rick's right, it was a pre-engineered building that was done, roof flayed, when young older came in, we redid the roof around that same time period, we had a heavy, heavy snow. The pre-engineered building didn't hold up the snow, duh. It's been all fixed. Previous owner was a smart man. He's just collectible.
I mean, you said that the business is construction, or is it construction equipment? I mean.
Craig was in the trucking business.
Okay.
He had excavators, he repaired things, he had a paint shop in the area, he did all kinds of, he repaired people's equipment. There was, there was five or six businesses operating out of there besides his out there.
Yeah, Rick was saying, the storage, that's what it was.
Cleaning all out and.
Who's the building removal guy was out there for years?
Yeah, I know building, Hoarder Milk, there was Hoarder Milk trucks out there. Had trailers out there that they transferred milk out of it. It was just a lot of stuff.
Couldn't see it in the pines.
Couldn't see it in the pines.
That's why Rick doesn't like pine trees.
I see. Jay, do you have any comments? I know you did have some stuff that you wanted to bring up.
I, yes, and actually, I apologize, I did and updated. Hopefully, everybody saw the updated staff report. I had raised, you know, a number of questions, some concerns and issues, sent forwarded those to the applicant's representative. We received revised plans last week, and so really, all of the, almost all the questions that we had were addressed in revised plans or the cover letter that accompanied it. My kind of one outstanding question was trying to understand the nature of the business and exactly what was going on there, and I think that from the testimony we've heard this evening, I certainly feel I have a much better understanding of what was happening on the site. So overall, I think our concerns have been addressed.
I know one of the concerns, too, was the stuff that was out there, like the, what is it, vehicles and equipment and whatever.
Fine collectibles.
Fine collectibles, yeah, pretty much. But I'm glad to hear that that's going to be.
It's all gone.
There's one, they still have one machine out there, if you go there, there's still one machine out there that I'm working.
To try to get at.
Yeah. I just, Craig passed away, and the son's cleaning it up, and I've been working with him to get there, working to get there. We're almost there, we're really close. And, you know, as Jim said, the same thing's going to happen with Warren's, that's going to get cleaned up. That's, that's all gone. He basically has two years to get rid of the junkyard.
I see.
And he won't be done in a few months.
I think that's like. I know that one of the comments, I know that was something to do with landscaping, and you're going to have some sort of, I guess, that was addressed, added to the interior parking lot area, is that, how is that, is that island, I guess, a parking lot area?
Yeah, we've actually, we went to our landscape consultant, and, Mr. Chairman, we were showing, you know, a smattering of different type trees. I think you have the 20% rule in, in Litchfield, that if you have 10 trees, you can have no more than two of the same species, so they're looking for variety. And then inside here, Rick, you know, this was used kind of just for outdoor storage of junk, and Rick, Rick has pledged to us that he's going to clean that up, get a few trees in there, get some low-lying juniper and shrubs in there, too. I think we all know Rick and know his word is good, and he tells us that the site's going to look a lot better, and I certainly believe him.
Is there?
Then it's the combination of those new trees, Mr. Chairman, with, you know, what's going to happen here around it. And then, as I presented with the future here, there'll be a lot here, there'll be a lot here, so.
And I guess stop signs or?
Sure.
On, I guess that was another issue that came up.
We've added it to the drawing, so there is a New Hampshire DOT driveway permit associated with the relocation, and we've made that application.
Okay.
Permit should be pending any day.
That was actually my next question.
Yeah, okay.
The permit can't be issued till it's.
It came through. Hours of operation, is there going to be anything posted on that, or is it?
No.
Not really. It's not.
Been that way for 40 years, you know. You need to consider this, if there's a specialized piece of equipment that breaks down, these guys will work all night to get it, to get it done for the next day, you know? So generally, it's business hours, normal business hours, but, you know, we're not, the business is not bound by any specific hours.
All right. No, I was just curious. I know some site plans, you know, hours of operation are usually listed on the plan, so. Any lighting issues?
No, no lighting, no site lighting. There's building-mounted lighting for security here, but there's.
Nothing like LED or?
Any, no big poles or anything.
Anything with snow plowing? Do we have to see something where the snow goes?
Not an issue out there, because you've got, it's all cleared on both sides.
It's all clear?
It's not an issue, because you're going to get it off the hot top, and it's all going to sheet drain down to, to the detention basin. It doesn't go anywhere. It's no different than the school or the local firehouse we have here now and what that does.
Okay. Sometimes they're making them say where they're going to put it, right, on some of the drawings, but.
Yeah, we didn't raise it as an issue, because unlike some sites where you see where it's tight, in this case, it, there's a lot of opportunities.
Does anybody have any small questions?
So, might sound like a simple question, but why? Why are you doing this? Is it about the?
Why are you doing it?
Yeah, the future vision, or is it just about to make it aesthetically?
When you and I drive by it, it doesn't look very good.
All right, good. There you go.
There's your why.
Yep.
And you said, I think you said the Z B A approved the special exception.
For the work within the wetland buffer, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well said.
Okay.
You got that right, Jay.
I, I knew it was coming, but I haven't seen actual notice, but I was aware of it, yes.
Possibly, maybe June had it and.
It'll be until Thursday, so I'll speak.
I'll be here tomorrow, so I get it from there.
If you want, just go quickly through the, your waiver request again. I know, essentially, I mean, the first one has to do with specific conditions of land, so that traffic and.
Yep.
So what the, what you see as an unnecessary hardship and why we should grant waiver.
Okay, so first one, sir, section 120.1 Traffic Impact Study. Again, the loan, the type of use, the low number of employee counts, the fact that it's been an ongoing business for many years, the fact that there'll be no increased number of truck trips. We believe the spirit and intent of your ordinance is met by, by granting us relief, because it's, it's such a low intense user that it won't create any undue traffic. The hardship would be, and you can have a hard, cost is a consideration for site plan hardships, not necessarily for zoning hardships, as Attorney Minkar will tell you, but for a site plan, it can be a hardship, and it was unnecessary to do a full traffic study for three or four employees.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
Next one, section 120.13 Building Design Review. Again, no changes are proposed, no building additions are proposed. This is really a plan for site improvements, and so because of that, we thought it was reasonable to, to request a waiver of the building design review.
Anything from anybody?
Let's see. The third one, section 150.7 Site Specific Soils. As you know, site-specific soils are requirement, they're requirement in many communities. You know, here, we, you know, I believe most municipalities like to have it because it kind of zeros in specifically on soil types on a particular piece of property. Here, we have a very small septic system used for this building. It's located behind the facility. We did testing for the stormwater basin. We had, I believe, very favorable results for the test pits, and we do not have any New Hampshire D E S permitting associated with the project. We're not disturbing over 100,000 square feet of land with this project. So for those reasons, we are seeking, seeking relief, and we believe the spirit and intent of your ordinance is protected, because we did do the other test thing, and those test pit logs are located in the, in the, in the site plan.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion, a motion that we accept the waiver. What's the second?
Okay. There's a motion to accept the three waivers that were just discussed. Second, we have a second, okay? Do we have any discussion? I have a motion, a second. We have a discussion. Just quickly, Jay, before we go and take a vote, are you comfortable with the waiver requests?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion, yes, no, okay? All those signify, who would approve the waiver requests as provided tonight by the applicant, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. So the waiver requests have been granted or approved.
I can make a motion that we accept the plan.
Okay.
It's so simple.
I believe you did accept the plan.
Yes, that's a good point. I have to do public input first. So, point of order. Okay, yeah, all right. So, yes, thank you, Jay. So at this time, if the board doesn't have any further questions, I'm going to open it up to public input. Are there any members of the public here this evening who would like to, has questions, concerns about this project, would like to ask the applicant questions? And I don't see any takers, okay? So at this time, I will close public input, and I will turn it back to the board. So at this time, I will close public input and I will turn it back to the board. So we have the application before us. And does anybody have any further questions? Do you wanna take a vote? What do you wanna do?
I'm gonna draw my motion and say it again.
You could. If you want to.
That, we approve the plan.
Okay. Second.
With the findings as done by NRPC, Jay, and the way the waivers as granted.
Okay. I'm just gonna add, it's gonna be, I would prefer we have it as a conditional approval. On the condition that we have, well, we have the copy of Lou Karen's recommendations. I would make that a condition of approval for this project since he is the town engineer. And I think we should go by what the our town engineer recommends. So I would recommend as conditions of approval, this, the recommendations of the engineer Lou Karen in his letter of July thirtieth, two thousand nineteen to the planning board. I would also, as a condition of approval, that we receive copy of the decision from the zoning board of adjustment as to the special exception. Also conditioned would be a letter possibly from the fire department or from the chief of the fire department, someone in the fire department, basically what their, if they have any comments or concerns to, you know, provide a letter to the, the planning board. Also, any of the recommendations, anything that was addressed in the site plan this evening and had been Jay's concerns as to the issues, I don't think there's any issues there. I think everything has been addressed, it looks like. I think, one of the things I will ask on the plan itself, if you could at least put a description of the nature of the business that was there. You gave us a good account tonight of what that is, just have that marked on the plan, something, give us information about that. Just to give it a little bit more clarity. The waivers will be a condition of approval, we've, we've approved those. Am I missing anything, anybody? I know it's a lot of stuff.
Just the driveway permit.
Driveway permit, yeah, from New Hampshire DOT was gonna be a condition of that.
Also, I thought the engineer had already given the engineer his stuff already, it's been addressed.
What's that?
Lou has already sent the stuff to him and they've already addressed it.
Right, so I'm just making it clear that it's a condition that they have the approvals for DOT. So, yeah, and if they haven't, they're fine, so, okay.
I'll refine my recommendations to meet the conditions as is stated.
Okay, so I have a motion for, to approve this on condition. Do I have a second?
They did, right?
Second, yeah.
Oh, Tony? Yeah, Kevin, but I think he withdrew it before, because we had to open it up to public input, so.
But then I had to, then he wanted all the conditions to.
Right, so.
But I thought they were all addressed already the way it was stated tonight.
I just wanna make sure.
It's in the minutes, that's why I'm saying, okay, fine.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're seconding?
Yes.
So I have a motion to accept the condition of approval, I have a second, do I have discussion? Okay, all those who approve, conditional approval of this project, please raise your hand, signify aye. Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, good luck, and we wish you the best. Hopefully we'll see you again.
Yes.
In the future, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another good job, sir, tonight in your presentation. Your experience has been very well. You're gonna slap me.
I think I'm up in like the fifteen, sixteen hundred meters in my career.
I know you're up. I know I am.
And I'm young still, I'm only twenty-nine.
Is there a prize for that?
No, Jerry's got it, I think. Jerry Prunier's got it, yeah.
Oh, indeed.
Thank you, have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda for this evening is committee reports, any reports from any committees? Kim, anything from NRPC?
No, our quarterly meeting is Wednesday, September eighteenth at seven PM. And Joshua may attend since it's a public meeting. Just to see if he's interested in joining that.
Okay.
Heritage Commission, we did not meet, we had a cancellation on that, we meet Tuesday, September tenth.
So what capacity am I going to this? Just observing?
Observe, right?
Yeah, feel comfortable observing right now.
You'll have a table like this.
Sarcastic over here?
No. They are exciting.
It's exciting.
And it's a great group.
I used to go there all the time, it was fun.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
You just can't go there unless, listen, you gotta make them spunky. Nothing sarcastic.
Uh, I, we had, the last meeting we had of the planning board, we had the EverSource project come before us. We wrote a letter of recommendation, we voted on it, we wrote a recommendation to the EverSource people, basically approving, you know, recommending, you know, approval of the project and going forward. So it sounds like that's been taken care of and.
It's just a formality assessment, the utility that's underneath their ease, but they have.
Well, exactly.
Okay, legally, hi, we're doing something.
Yeah. Well, they went to the Conservation Commission, they came to us, so, you know, it's just, you know.
That's how that works.
Yeah, gotcha. Conservation Commission, I did attend the last meeting, the beginning of August, and obviously EverSource was there, so, as well. So that was the presentation. The Lower Merrimack Local Advisory Committee, I haven't heard yet whether they're meeting or not at the end of the month, I have to double check that. Right now it's kind of sporadic because they don't have a lot of applications or documents and stuff.
Nothing will.
Yeah. Although there was something which kind of interesting in the news, I don't know if you had an opportunity to see it. And it was sent to me by Gene Porter, the chair, and I guess that a lot of people down in Massachusetts are getting fired up about the combined sewer discharges, especially as it relates to Manchester, maybe Nash was, well, I don't know. But I guess a lot of the, I guess they had a kayaking trip, I guess there were some representatives from Massachusetts that kayaked the Merrimack River.
Yeah.
Down to Lowell and they made it. So apparently they're trying to promote or advocate for the Merrimack River and.
Right, they came up, yeah.
Yeah, so. I thought that was interesting, so.
That was in Litchfield, what's up?
It was, okay.
It was on Channel Nine's news.
Yeah.
Great pictures of kayaking from Massachusetts down, from New Hampshire down.
Right.
We've done it already. Got stuck in Lowell, put a dam.
Yeah. Well. Need I say more? No offense to people who are from Lowell. Okay, the approval of the August sixth, two thousand nineteen minutes, did anyone have an opportunity to take a look at those? And have any questions or concerns?
I still don't even, I didn't have access to them, because I don't have that site.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
Probably just email them out then.
Yeah, why don't we do that, we can, you know, if we have to, we don't have to, I mean, if you wanna wait to approve them, we can do that. It's from the sixth, yeah. Well, how about this?
Well, you don't have access.
Yeah, he doesn't.
I have a hard copy that I think.
You did, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Oh, yeah, you're right, no, no, you're right.
You can take part two for your wife.
Yes. We do have a hard copy, I apologize.
I remember the days we used to get those and be able to read them comfortably. Now I gotta put a laptop in my lap and get comfortable with it. You can't just do this and look at the page, you know? Today, those kids, the little thing I saw, nineteen seventy-nine, the kids are all playing in the water. Enjoying life every house. In two thousand nineteen, there's three kids standing with an iPhone.
Look at the pictures of water.
You know, it's, it's the world.
It is. It is. So, I mean, has any, do you wanna approve the minutes tonight or do you wanna wait? I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve them, if there's nothing.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August sixth.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's me.
Okay, that's you. All right, second, do I have discussion?
You got three out of two.
Does that count?
All right, hearing, no discussion, all those in favor of approving the August sixth minutes?
I mean, well, discussions, I haven't read them, I, there's no way I'm gonna approve. I mean, I can't prove my abstain, but.
Okay.
You can abstain.
You can, you certainly can do that.
I'm doing it.
All those in favor of signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, abstained.
Excuse my hand.
Yeah, right. Knee jerk, man.
So, he's gonna abstain too.
He's gonna abstain. So, yeah, so motion passes, what, three? Zero, two.
Yeah.
Any other business this evening? Jay, do you have anything for the board?
Uh, I do not.
Kim, do you have anything?
Joan asked if we, at the last meeting, mentioned anything about September third.
Yeah, I saw that, I guess there's a site coming in or something.
There's a subdivision plant, I don't know that it's scheduled yet, but there is a pending plant.
Yeah.
We'll put a calendar in this room. Okay, and it's gonna go on the wall next to the sign so everybody will know.
So what's, what's this, this is, what's Thursday at us?
I think it's after the week.
No, that's.
Tuesday.
It's during the week.
It's the day after Labor Day.
Labor Day is Monday, Tuesday.
And there's a site walkthrough?
I don't know if she was trying to think if we even mentioned it last week.
There's some sort of project or something that's gonna be.
You're gonna want the one on Hillcrest Road? Is that the one?
I'm not sure, she didn't say what it was.
That sidewalk was already scheduled. So it's, it's not for a sidewalk, it's, it is that subdivision?
Oh, okay, so, all right.
And that's the date that we were looking at, it doesn't have to be that date, that's the day that we were looking at.
Oh, we're saying we might not have a quorum here on that date.
I, I guess.
I don't know, I don't know the nature of Jones' question.
That was, yeah, she basically.
She just wanted to know if we mentioned anything about it from the prior.
We have, if, if everybody's gonna be, who isn't gonna be here?
Let's get back to Joan this week, please, and tell her what, if anybody's gonna be here or there. I know I'm, I'm off the week before, but I will be here the week tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we table it till, wait a minute, this is, we can't table it.
I say we have to be, to be there, if we got a meeting scheduled for that day, we should be.
I'm gonna be here, so.
I'm gonna be, to be here.
Okay, so.
Well, it looks like we'll have a quorum, you can be here.
Yep, it's the first day of school, but we'll be here.
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So forget about the table. I have nothing else to add. If anybody else has anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, second.
I'll do first, what did?
I'll let you.
I'll first, hey, second.
First, okay, so motion to adjourn, first, second, discussion, all right. All those signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you for joining us this evening and we'll see you in September. Have a great summer, thank you.